Welcome to Civitas LA, featuring diverse and emerging leaders who make up this dynamic region and are creating community every day and building a better tomorrow. My name is Dwayne Gatheres. In these biweekly conversations, we hear from, learn from, and are truly inspired by a new generation of civic entrepreneurs who are forging a path forward and making the greater Los Angeles region a stronger, more resilient, and connected group of citizens. Now more than ever, we aim to elevate civic discourse, foster community connections, and promote civic knowledge and engagement across our region while elevating diverse and emerging voices in that conversation. A few years ago, Pew Research Center conducted a survey and found there are 90,107 government units across the United States, everything from county governments to school districts, et cetera. And in this survey, they sought to ask the question, who seeks out these offices? And found that barely 2% of all Americans say that they have ever run for federal, state, or local office. The nonpartisan civic engagement group out of Cambridge, Massachusetts called Nonprofit Vote, wrote in a blog post encouraging nonprofit leaders to run themselves, stated that encouraging people to vote is one of the most direct ways to protect and promote democracy, but running for office is probably the boldest. Given how some feel politics can be a messy business and how our politics seem to grow ever more contentious, Civitas LA is grateful to be joined in studio by two great civic leaders from our region, who both began their journeys as community builders and community leaders, but took the leap into elected leadership. Representing and serving community for nearly 30 or 40 years at local, county, and state levels of government, and currently representing nearly 500,000 Angelinos, we are joined in studio today by two distinguished Los Angeles City Council members, Honorable Marquise Harris Dawson, representing the 8th Council District, and the Honorable Mark Ridley Thomas, who represents the people of the 10th District of the City of Los Angeles. Gentlemen, as we kick off year two of this podcast, welcome to Civitas LA. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. Delighted to be here.
Good to be here.
We appreciate it so much. You know, as we'd like to start out before our audience, regionally, nationally, and internationally, now that we have listeners in 28 countries, including the Maldives, which we always appreciate, that one listener in the Maldives, share with us a brief biographical intro to you, you know, where were you born, raised, how you got to Los Angeles, either your family or yourself. Supervisor, oh, well, no longer supervisor, Mr. Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas, City of Los Angeles, Councilor's 10.
Thank you very much, Dwayne. I'm a native of Los Angeles, so that means I'm born and raised and still leaning in. And I'm a product of the Los Angeles Unified School District. And from there, I found my way to a college called Immaculate Hart, and from there to the University of Southern California. Married for now, 42 years, and don't sweat it, Marquise, you'll make it. You'll be all right. We have twin sons and two grandchildren, so we're stakeholders in an intergenerational way. And so, my journey from the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, after having taught high school, to then a member of the Los Angeles City Council, and from there to the state legislature, and from there to the Board of Supervisors, and now a member of the Los Angeles City Council yet again, serving at the pleasure of the people of the 10th District and at the direction of my colleague in the 8th District. And so, here we are, doing what we do and prepared to do more of it.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you. It's good to be with you, Mr. Gatheres. I also born and raised in Los Angeles, California.
So I'm gonna stop you there, because that's really, that's really a great point. Here we have two native Angelinos, so that's terrific. Please, sorry.
Born and raised here in Los Angeles, California, grew up in South Los Angeles. I am the age where I was coming of age during the crack cocaine epidemic and the gang warfare epidemic. And so, for me, an inflection point in life was when my family picked up and moved out of South LA, which was the only community I'd ever known. We knew everybody on the block, you knew what town in Louisiana every household was from, and everybody could, every adult could chastise you on the block. And we moved out to the suburbs for better schools, but mostly for safety. My parents had two boys, and as my parents came to say to me later in adulthood, because I was quite upset about moving out from a community like South LA to the suburbs, they said, well, we're glad you're here to argue with us about it, because a lot of your friends are not. And that certainly was the case. From there, you know, moving out of a historically black community and a black community, I wanted to do the blackest thing I could find out of high school, so I went to Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia. And that's really where my political training started, was in the middle of activism, worked on political campaigns there, came back home, got involved in the family business, which was real estate and housing management, which is actually, turns out to be very useful in the situation we're in now with regard to housing. And from there, met a woman named Karen Bass, who hired me to be a youth organizer, and toil there organizing students at high schools across South Los Angeles around criminal justice, around, one of our signature victories is winning the universal right to college prep courses. We had schools like Fremont Emmanuel Arts, where the college prep courses weren't even offered. So even if you were a very good student, you didn't necessarily qualify to go to a UC or the best schools in the country. Went on from there when Karen Bass went to Sacramento to be an assembly member. I took over the organization and ran it for 10 years. And at the end of that time period, folks began to talk to me about the 8th Council District, which, you know, I'd always looked up to Supervisor Ridley Thomas. For a short period of time, Karen Bass had sought the 8th Council District seat. And so, we decided to pursue it, and we were able to put up a successful campaign, and where I became the, not only the member representing the 8th District, but the Chair of the Homelessness and Poverty Committee, which is the first standing committee in the country dealing with the issue of homelessness, and was able to co-author the bond HHH, which builds 10,000 units of permanent supportive housing. And I continue to serve up until December of 2024 at least.
Well, you know, as a podcast focused on elevating civic knowledge and engagement, what does civic engagement mean to each of you? And share with us your civic engagement journey. How'd you become involved in community? Let's start with Mr. Harris Dawson.
You know, I take a real universalist view on this issue of civic engagement. I think it happens at every level. So it's, you know, I remember my grandmother and my aunts getting together with other women on the street to figure out who was gonna watch the children when they played football in the street, to who was gonna make sure everybody got food, to sometimes the men in the community making sure that Ms. Johnson, who was a widower, had someone to drive her to the gas station to fill up her car. There's that very basic level of community. And then there's things like running organizations, there's things like participating in it in an academic way, and then obviously, we think about running for office or being a commissioner on a professional or volunteer basis. And then there's the vote, the single, that is the one form of civic engagement that we do alone. Every other form of civic engagement, we do together. But the vote, I think, is the basis in sort of the fulcrum on which all civic engagement rests.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, are you now ready?
Not really, but I'll do my best. Civic engagement, it is essentially what my colleague referenced in terms of the right to vote. It was civic engagement, standing up tall on a bridge called Edmund Petterson, Selma, Alabama, in 1965. Therefore, they who bled, fought, and died for us to exercise that right. And so, if we fast forward, it is essentially that same level of civic engagement that animates the franchise and basically says to all people irrespective of their ethnicity, you have a right to participate in the democratic process owing to your citizenship status. Now, California did not know that it would be able to benefit and/or exploit the work of that march in Selma, but in fact, the sanctions that came into existence owing to the Voting Rights Act apply to the state of California, thus the protection of bilingual ballots. And so, all of us owe a great debt of gratitude. My most clear example of civic engagement in Los Angeles is that which we call the Empowerment Congress. It is essentially about reciprocal accountability. It is about intentional civility. It is about the notions that basically say that there is something resident in each resident that causes them to be able to engage in a way that they work with their neighbors and seek to demystify government for the good of the communities of which they are part. And so, civic engagement has been, you might say, one of the hallmarks of my career, my service in public life, and I'm very proud of it. And on that basis, I think I've been a much more effective public official than what otherwise would have been the case. It causes a public official to be a servant leader. That's what civic engagement, once authenticated, can be.
Well, over the course of the past year, and this is kicking off our second year, we've spoken with a wide range of women and men who are serving and creating community at the local level and doing wonderful work. And occasionally, we asked them, would you ever run? And a lot of people recoil from that. So, you know, given the fact that some people believe that politics is a messy business, you know, what inspired or motivated you to actually run for elected office, Mr. Harris Dawson?
You know, there were a number of things. When you're involved in public life, as I began to be at a very early age, I grew up in the black church. Part of the, part of what happens is the black church's struggle, which I was very much engaged in. At a very early age, I decided, I made the decision, I was gonna dedicate my life to struggle. So there's engagement, but there's a specific form of engagement called struggle. And that is trying to create justice where you see injustices. And, you know, through that, you know, I think the moment that I can remember thinking like, oh, running for office is something I can do is during my time at Morehouse. I was working on my senior paper, and my senior thesis was on a young community organizer, nonprofit leader, who was running for Los Angeles City Council, the 8th District in fact. And as I looked at the spectrum of the kinds of things he was able to do, I said to myself, oh, this is something I could do. And it was really through that experience that I began to look at it in a serious way. And, you know, while in Atlanta, I worked on a campaign for a man named Michael Lomax, who did not become mayor, but he became a county commissioner. So I had the, I knew how bad it felt to lose early on, so it was only uphill from there. And when I got back home to California, getting engaged in the Community Coalition was the form, form that that took.
And Mr. Ridley Thomas, you've, you've had the longer term of service at various levels of government. What inspired you at the, at the beginning to get involved in elected politics?
Essentially, opportunity. It was not my intent to pursue public office. A seat on the City Council became open, and there was a significant amount of encouragement for me to pursue it, which I did. I had run four years earlier to be a member of the Los Angeles Unified Board of Trustees. That was in 1987. And that was the first electoral campaign in which I was involved. I did not win, and I've been involved in 10 campaigns since that time, and I never have since that time experienced what I did that time.
Which is a loss.
No L's, just W's.
We like that.
That L was very upsetting and very motivating. And so, I say to people who ask me about running for office, I say to them, you have to be prepared to lose. Are you prepared to lose? Are you psychically, materially, emotionally prepared to lose? Because if you're not, this isn't what you need to do, because it can be very, very devastating. Now, I do not wish to suggest that I was devastated by it. I dusted off my shoes and went back to work, got busy, and four years later, I was successful with the support of a wide range of people for whom I am most grateful, and a community that has encouraged me from that time until this time to do the best that I can to represent, represent them, because they deserve the best possible leadership opportunities and options that can be afforded them.
And you've bounced back with nine wins. That's, that's a good, that's a, that's a good run.
10.
10 wins. Along the way, tell me some, some leaders, public or private leaders, that you've, that you've observed and admired along the way in your own journey of leadership, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Well, you know, certainly, present company is big for me. I talked about the paper that we did at Morehouse College. You know, I like to, when I, when I talk about writing that paper, I always say to people, be careful what you're doing, because you never know who's watching.
So you referenced a paper about someone, but you didn't say who that someone was.
That paper was about Mark Ridley Thomas, the leader of Southern Christian Leadership Conference.
You wrote a paper on him.
Yes. And they, and they let me graduate out of Morehouse with it, so it was, it was good enough.
Can that paper be found anywhere in the public record?
It is not in the public record. It is in the record, but it's not in the public record.
And how, what grade did you get on that paper?
I got an, I got an A minus on the paper. Turns out I had a number of typographical errors.
Okay, just on typos. Nothing, nothing factual was wrong. But other than, other than present company, give me some, some leaders.
You know, certainly Karen Bass. You know, I got to work side by side with her for 10 years in Community Coalition. There is no education like that. You know, one of the brilliant leaders of our time and most consequential leaders of our time.
And Karen Bass is now in the US Congress.
That's right.
We appreciate that.
And, you know, was on the shortlist to be Vice President, a whole bunch of other things. And so, that looms extremely large. But it is also the everyday people whose names are not in the paper. You know, the members of the Community Coalition who talked about migrating to California in the late 30s, early 40s, to do agricultural work in the Central Valley, which I didn't even know black people did, and then migrating to Los Angeles and setting up a life and building the community that we now all take for granted. You know, to my, my grandmother on my father's side, who integrated, got divorced from my grandfather and integrated Carson, California, and had a cross burned on her front lawn. It's, it's really the everyday people to me who are the most inspiring, because they get out of bed every day and they just do it because it's the right thing to do, and aren't looking to get their name in the paper or in lights up on the board at, at City Hall.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a great response, and I would, I would say that's part of why we do this work of Civitas LA and why it's taken so long to get such distinguished council members on this program, because we've tried to focus the past year on community leaders, those who don't show up in the LA Times, who don't show up on NBC News, but the people who are raising their hand every day and showing up to do the work of building community. So I hear what you say there, but we appreciate having such distinguished leaders on. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Well, it is a question of those that you describe as everyday people, ordinary people who are our teachers, our mentors. They give a lot, they help a lot, they cause us to be better at what we do. They, they challenge us, they embrace us. This is particularly true when I first began this journey. The names of any number of individuals who just were inspired enough to embrace a new direction, and they found their way to the Empowerment Congress and made sure that it was the best that it could be, many of whom have since passed, but I shall never, ever forget them for what they meant to me and the communities that they represented. Well, the towering figure in my life is no doubt my grandmother, Sylvia Beatrice Pickens Thomas. She came to Los Angeles literally 100 years ago this year, and she lived to the age of 98. She was born in 1898, and I have to say that she was an extraordinary human being. You talk about civic engagement, she had it like that. And she was blind, and yet she poured everything she had into her daughter's youngest son. She helped shape my character, and time won't permit me to give any number of examples of how she blessed me. Her son, the Reverend Eugene Thomas, the late Reverend Eugene Thomas, another towering figure in my life. And along those lines, you can't ignore the pastor of the Second Baptist Church, the late Reverend Thomas Kilgore Jr., a Morehouse man, Chairman of the Board of More, of Morehouse, and a mentor of consequence, the Reverend J.M. Lawson Jr., still fighting the good fight, 93 years old he is, and pouring it in, the teacher of nonviolence set right there. Now, Dr. Kilgore was Dr. King's babysitter. Dr. Lawson was Dr. King's teacher of nonviolence, and those were individuals that embraced me. And of course, my conversation partner of consequence for now 40 years, literally, Professor Cornel West. These are they who have made a big, big difference in my life.
Well, certainly in the, as elected leaders, there's a lot of work, a lot of work that comes through your inbox, and you've worked on myriad issues, but share with us a few policy areas that have most animated you over the course of your elected official time.
You know, there's, there's no more animating issue in this time period than the issue of houselessness. Anywhere you go in the city, you see people on the streets, you see conditions that we used to think of in terms of the second or the third world. We see it right here in Los Angeles, an economic powerhouse in the richest state and the richest country in the world. And our ability to house our own people and to deliver health services and social services to those people really consumes every waking moment and a disproportionate share of any energy that we have. There are lots of issues that we care about, you know, a project I'm very excited about, Destination Crenshaw, which looks to preserve the black community from La Mert Park to Hyde Park for generations to come by making a cultural front, establishing a cultural front in, in the struggle for our space in this city and our future in this city. I'm very, very excited about, but all of that is against the backdrop of a vexing problem with houselessness.
And Mr. Ridley Thomas, you know, you've served at the city, the county, and the state level. What policy areas have most animated you throughout all that service?
Well, the thread would have to be that police accountability, which is a very forceful issue, and my work in that regard predates my involvement as an elected official. It goes back to the late 70s with the killing of Yulma Love. And it was a defining moment, a watershed moment in the life of the city of Los Angeles. And it was fully loaded with all sorts of issues in terms of gender, in terms of essentially a person who was all but defenseless, some would argue, over a gas bill. So it had economic justice and poverty issues packed into it as well. And so, fast forward to where we are this very moment, the names that are invoked, that are those who have died as a result of excessive use of force and the like, from George Lloyd forward and backwards, seems to me to be that. So that is the thread. And we cannot turn back on that issue. I declare that I am not anti-police, but I am absolutely anti-police abuse, police misconduct, and police corruption. And we have sufficient evidence of that, and our communities will not stand for it. And we don't have to choose between having fair, just, accountable police and the matter of justice. We deserve both. We can have justice and safety, and that's what democracy affords us.
Well, you both have mentioned these policy areas that are all very complex and take a lot of time, and patience can sometimes be in short order. And, you know, certainly getting people aware and engaged around these issues can be difficult. You know, you both have probably taken a lot of bullets at, you know, council meetings and committee meetings, and it can be rough sometimes. So how do you work with community to engage them on these issues, to seek their input, to, you know, share with them where you're coming from on an issue? You know, how do you work with community in your district around these difficult issues?
Well, you know, having spent 20 years as a community organizer, a professional community organizer, engaging folks, getting people to be a part of the conversation is what I have as a vocation. In the city of Los Angeles, we're very fortunate, we have something called a Neighborhood Council Structure, which is based on the Empowerment Congress, built in the early 90s by a council member Ridley Thomas and Anthony Thicpen and other activists in the neighborhood. So we've got a rich tradition of engagement in the, the community. I think the challenge that I think we all continue to face is the pace of change.
Sure.
The pace of change just doesn't meet the mark for folks' involvement. And I think to the extent that dampens involvement sometimes, or it makes it require much more labor to keep people involved, because the wheels of change turn so slow, and there's so many hidden figures, I'll call them. I call them grassroots status quo activists. There are an awful lot of people who like things exactly the way they are. And I think that that's really the, the challenge and the paradox of being an elected official.
Well, you certainly touched on earlier, when we talked about civic engagement, what that meant to you, and one element of that was voting and, and voting and participating in the, in the electoral process. You know, as you both know, that our region has had a huge problem with voter turnout at the local level these last number of years, and efforts have been made to realign elections with state elections and national elections, get more people involved in that, in that particular aspect of civic engagement, which is voting. Do you think enough is being done to encourage voter participation, and what more might we consider going forward?
We have to do more. Resource allocation, that we have to push back on right wing forces that choose to deny us the constitutional right to vote. That's where the energy seems to be at this point in time. Every example that I can think of is right wing inspired. I mean, that which the Texas delegation is seeking to do in the nation's capital is not quite an aberration. We have too many examples of that. Now, what about California? Well, the recall of Governor Gavin Newsom is akin to that very spirit of shutting down politics for tomorrow and that which would represent progress. The only thing you have to do is see whose funding that's essentially seeking to engage in practices of what we describe as voter suppression. They might as well try, try to reinstitute poll taxes for all intents and purposes. It is an ugly moment in American history, and it is inspired by the rapacious behavior of the former president of the United States, who will not relent. He encourages this every waking moment.
Mr. Harris Dawson, you want to add to that comment?
I would agree with everything Councilmember Ridley Thomas said, and I call this the Donald Trump period in political history, both the left and the right, because the tenor of engagement is toxic, and it is meant to split people apart rather than bring people... uh, and it is meant to split people apart rather than bring, bring people uh, close together. Uh, at the same time, I, I would also agree around this recall movement. I mean, in, in deep blue California, uh, we have several dozen recalls going on right now. Uh, recall is, the recall effort is, is one of the many anti-democratic um, um, elements of our government. And uh, you see the right wing using that uh, in the civil rights movement. Martin Luther King referred to it as nullification. So if you can't win the regular way, you do a backdoor way so you can win. You can never win the governorship of California, straight up. Uh, so you create a recall that allows you the possibility of winning with twenty percent or thirty percent or even less. Uh, and the same thing at the city council level and, and the commissioner level and the county supervisor level that you see all over the state. And so um, these are, these are wartime tactics and, you know, I think we have to have a wartime footing. And take these things extremely seriously and call them out for what they are.
Sixty-eight some odd recalls afoot in the state of California.
In California alone?
Yep.
Interesting. Wow.
And, and we're, and, and we're the progressive state.
Yeah. Right. Wow. So, you know, as we consider, you know, your work as community leaders and, you know, particularly, uh, Mr. Ridley Thomas, your work leading the Empowerment Congress over thirty years, which seeks to foster community and also foster build a platform for the next generation of leadership. You know, I'm curious to get your thoughts on the state of black elected leadership in our region. Um, some years ago, the LA Times, you know, ran a piece um, on this. I think it was probably after your supervisory race back in two thousand eight, um, talking about the shifting demographics of the region and what that meant for black elected leadership, particularly um, here in the city of Los Angeles. So give me your thoughts on that and, you know, how you're working to encourage, you know, young black and brown, you know, kids out of school to get involved in elected politics.
The order of the day is bench building. We present Exhibit A, namely uh, Isaac Bryant. Brian, who was just elected to the California State Assembly representing the fifty-fourth district. Uh, we've got to do more of that. So I'll put a pin in there and let me dial back to uh, the uh, retirement of Mayor Tom Bradley, who we affectionately called the Tall Man. Um, and there was a spate of articles at that point in time uh, essentially predicting the demise of black leadership in Los Angeles. Um, and at that time, I asserted that such predictions were grossly premature. Uh, and I think one of Los Angeles's premier assets is its diversity. And that to me means the fullness of diversity. And it's hard for me to imagine how you speak to the issue of diversity, equity, uh, racial reckoning, absent uh, the investment, absent the equity, absent, that is, the sweat equity, the, the intellectual capital, the moral investment of African Americans in Los Angeles and beyond. Um, our footprint is firmly situated in the experience of Los Angeles. Um, and shrinking though it may be, it is equally indelible. Um, and I think to the extent that that is the case, we have to be open to what the future means. We have to build coalitions and one of the things that I like most about uh, Congresswoman Bass, Councilmember Harris Dawson, uh, and those who have not have been a part of elected office who are African Americans from Mary Lee to Denise Fairchild to Anthony Thicpen, and I can uh, name many others. We've always had a multiracial consciousness. But building coalitions suggests that you have a healthy assessment of your stake in it. And to the extent that that is the case, um, I think we should keep our eye on the prize.
I, I, you know, I certainly agree with all of the virtues of diversity that Councilmember Ridley Thomas lays out. But I, I would dig a little deeper and say diversity is important. It's critical. It's, it's a key value. Uh, but black people are essential for Los Angeles to be what Los Angeles is. It is black people in Los Angeles that forged the concept in a decisive way of the multiracial coalition. So this idea that we take for granted all over the country that Barack Obama ran for president on and Joe Biden ran for president on and Jesse Jackson before them, that started here in Los Angeles with the nineteen sixty-nine uh, mayoral campaign of, of Tom Bradley and Mayor Dollarhide in, in Compton. Black people asserted the multiracial coalition. That didn't, that invention didn't fall out of the sky. Um, we sit now in the heart of Hollywood. Los Angeles remains today and has been for generations the creative capital of the world. You take away our cultural participation in the cultural community, the cultural product that comes out of the black community in Los Angeles. I contend, Los Angeles is not the creative capital of the world. Some other place would be. And so I think uh, paying attention to the position of black folks is, is, is singular uh, and is important in addition to uh, diversity. And like Councilman Ridley Thomas points out, at almost every opportunity, the mainstream press puts out this line uh, that, you know, the, the, as, as uh, the councilman has called it, the premature declaration of black political extinction. Uh, when I got elected, the headline after my election, and I was proud, uh, councilman, I was proud. I won in the primary. I had like sixty-three, four percent. I, I was just riding high. You know what the headline in the paper was the next day? Will Marquise be the last black councilperson for the eighth district? Or for the city of Los Angeles, actually, will you be the last black councilperson? And here we're sitting next to another black, black member of the council. But there's this eagerness uh, to dismiss us from the stage. Uh, and uh, again, our, our lines are not over and the play is not over. We will be in the closing scene.
Well, we've talked about, you know, politics and how it can be such a, a messy business. So share with us, you know, why run and do you actually enjoy campaigning? And if so, what are some highlights and lowlights of your life on the campaign trail over the course of, you know, ten elections?
Mr. 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 Harris Dawson is in a better position to answer that right now.
We, uh, yeah, I'm.
It's a little sensitive for me to ask.
I'm new enough that I can still remember some of the sweet moments. Of course, you love the Martin Luther King Parade. Um, you know, one of the things about Los Angeles that gets overlooked is Los Angeles is quintessentially a black city. And the way that Atlanta is, or you think of Chicago or St. Louis or any of those cities. Uh, we have one of the largest black populations of, of any city in the US, I think outside of Chicago and uh, uh, Kings County in, in New York. And so we have great celebrations in Martin Luther King Day. Largest one. Uh, um, great weather. You get to enjoy the great weather in, in LA in the middle of January. It seems like the sun always shines on King Day for the parade and uh, you see Ridley Thomas out there with, with Avis and the convertible uh, waving and the rest of us. And so that's always a, a, a great celebration. We have many of them in Los Angeles um, that are, uh, too many to name on this program. And then, you know, running for office, campaigning for me is, is fun. I will say, six years in.
Okay.
I had much more fun campaigning than, than I'm happy sitting in the city council, listening to people call me everything under the sun except for a child of God. Um, uh, campaigning is, is exciting because campaigns, especially when they're new and they're fresh, they can bring out the best in people. I, I tell a story and I'll try to tell it quickly here where you put out your, your announcements, you put up your website and uh, I got a, a check in the mail with a handwritten note uh, from a man named Mr. Abraham. And Mr. Abraham had been the janitor when I was in the third grade. And way, way back when I was in elementary school, they didn't suspend or expel you. When you acted up in class, they sent you to go work with the janitor.
Okay.
And the janitor would say to me, how many toilets is it gonna take for you to figure out how to act in class? And I think maybe it was one and a half.
Yeah.
And, and I haven't seen or heard from him since. And I opened the mail and here's a, a seventy-five dollar check from Mr. Abraham. Uh, and he says, uh, uh, I saw this in you uh, when you were a child. And, you know, that, only a campaign can bring those kinds of moments. Uh, and so I, I, for me, uh, campaigning and, and asking folks to give uh, to lend to you for that day or for that period, uh, their most measurable unit of power in our governance system. They'll lend it to you for that day and mark your name on the ballot, uh, and send you uh, to represent their interest. Uh, there, there are few things more sacred and special.
That's great. Mr. Ridley Thomas, any campaign highlights or lowlights you care to share with us?
Well, I'm impressed with what uh, Mr. Harris Dawson has just afforded and um, I think we can think of similar uh, instances that are heartwarming and very encouraging. I would hasten to say that uh, he prefers campaigning versus governing and for obvious reasons in terms of the previous conversation we were having about how abusive it has gotten.
Sure.
Um, and not that I'm a glutton for punishment, but I much prefer governing than campaigning. Um, campaigning is very hard and it's harder for some than others. Um, obviously I've been successful in uh, doing what needs to be done in that regard from fundraising to policy positioning and all of that, building the coalitions to win. But there's a lot of grovelling.
Okay.
A lot of leveraging. And it's almost as if people are sitting out there waiting for you to come forward for your next adventure. And the stakeholders and the special interests groups, they are just licking their chops.
Okay.
Uh, uh, to uh, cause you to be who they wish for you to be or else. And there are more ultimatums in the game and for some of us, that's a little harder to take. And some of us are less agile than others of us in terms of um, moving around that and so forth. So um, my hat is off to you, Mr. Harris Dawson, for your embrace of campaigning. And people wonder why I've stayed in this business so long if I didn't particularly like campaigning because I take my oath seriously and the business of governance is where I hang my hat.
But speaking of, you know, those who are out there waiting to see what your next adventure might be, what is your next adventure beyond your current role? Anybody wanna share what's up, what's next for your, in your journey?
Well, council recess is over on Wednesday, so we're gonna try to make it back to my seat.
Okay.
To cast a few votes.
Right. And we will both hopefully be helping to lead the effort to address the COVID nineteen crisis and the, the range of issues that confront us with the Delta variant being as infectious and contagious as it is. The next adventure has to be uh, to come full force in dealing with that in a um, a creative manner. The next adventure has to be uh, working to uh, lay out a, a more clear agenda with respect to street engagement on homelessness. The next adventure has to be uh, how we uh, move more resources into housing the houseless. Uh, it is not about enforcement. It is not about anti-camp. It is about uh, a right to housing. The next adventure has to be how do we put Los Angeles where it should be in terms of humanizing this environment and taking seriously the fundamental contradictions that tied to the issue of economic injustice and poverty. Uh, that's the next adventure.
Okay.
Both, both of us face, uh, and I think on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, but both of us face a particularly troubling storm. So we have redistricting coming up where this question of, you know, why are y'all still here? And taking up space uh, comes to a head. Uh, we have a situation where we're very likely to have, or certainly a good chance to have an unelected mayor. Uh, where there will be a, a mayor's race. Uh, there will be uh, I certainly, at least some reassignment of leadership roles on the Los Angeles City Council. What's our place in that discussion? So there's a lot to be handled in the short term. This is very hard to see beyond the current, those clouds out over the coast.
Now, we're entering uh, some pretty choppy waters, but um, but that leads us to this wind down and the lightning round because you're at your parades, you're at council meetings, you know, you're at community meetings. But at some point you switch off and you go and relax with your respective families. But our lightning round is an opportunity for us to get an inside look at your Los Angeles and to see what some of your favorites about Los Angeles are. So these are quick one, two sentence max answers to your favorites. Mr. Harris Dawson, favorite restaurant or two?
Earl's Grill.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Alto Adams.
I tried to get a seat there recently. Favorite watering hole, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Uh, the world famous Quark.
Quark, okay. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
I don't know what a watering hole is.
Okay. Go to Mr. Ridley Thomas. Favorite place to take a visitor?
Well, somewhere between LACMA and the California African American Museum, when they are open and the exposition park complex.
We love Expo Park and we love the new Lucas Museum going up there.
Right.
Outdoor space is a recurring theme in, in all of our conversations. Give us a favorite park or hike, Mr. Harris Dawson?
The Friendship Bell of uh, Los Angeles and San Pedro.
Okay. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Well, it's called Park de Playa, thirteen point five miles from Baldwin Hills to uh, the ocean. And um, we completed that as one of the last things I was able to accomplish as a member of the Board of Supervisors. It's special.
Excellent. Community activity or events in your district? Favorite community activity, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Martin Luther King Day Parade.
Okay.
Well, there was a point in time where I would say the Prayer Bowl on January one of every year, where there's a, an extraordinary opportunity to hear some of the um, cities uh, most gifted uh, religious orators. They call them homilettists. And so uh, I found myself there to start the new year off.
Excellent. Well, this has been a great conversation and truly an honor for Civitas LA as we kick off our second year. We're really excited about the work that, that you're doing on behalf of your district, but also on behalf of our city. But as we like to say on Civitas LA, the guest gets the final word. So share with us some final thoughts on what impact on community you wish to have left behind when your civic journey is completed, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Well, uh, we hope that folks um, find in our example a, a reason or inspiration to stay encouraged and to stay active and to stay, stay engaged. I believe our best days are yet to come and that the true genius uh, of our community and our true potential is yet to be realized. We have these little babies walking around with more computing power in their back pocket uh, than it took to launch a rocket to the moon and bring it back. And I think uh, their uh, potential, if we can preserve the space for them to be actum, active uh, holds uh, tremendous benefits for all of humankind, not just our folks.
That's great. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Well, I think um, I'm deeply encouraged by the fact that uh, Marquise Harris Dawson, Dawson and I represent uh, differing uh, generations, um, it's a split generation. Um, and yet our collaboration uh, is for the benefit of the collective. And I mean that beyond um, African Americans, but I mean that for African Americans. Um, and so I'm significantly encouraged by someone who can represent as he is representing, uh, thinking and articulating as he does for African Americans, for Latinos, for Asian Pacific Islanders, for whites, for the entirety of the community native uh, peoples. That's what it's about. And we all ought to be encouraged by that. And I'm pleased to have the opportunity to be a part of that effort.
Well, that's terrific, you know, and this dialogue has been great. I really appreciate your time and we appreciate your service to community. And we appreciate your role as elected leaders because this sets up perfectly our next episode in two weeks with Natalie Samargian, who is the president and CEO of Coro um, entitled Redefining Leadership and What That Means Um, in Our Region. So thank you for that. And to our audience, thank you for tuning in today. We hope you enjoyed this program and we hope. We hope you enjoyed this program and we hope you'll join us in two weeks as we look forward to another great civic conversation. And as we say on Civitas LA, until we meet again, stay strong and get involved. To learn more about Civitas LA and share feedback on this program, or if you have a recommendation about future programs, please visit our website at www.civitasla.com. And we invite you to connect with us on Facebook at Civitas LA, Instagram at Civitas underscore LA and Twitter at Civitas underscore LA.